Oops, you were garbled there. Go and say that again.
Ready to go.
Okay, hopefully we don't have bandwidth issues here.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, now I got you. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Saldovia City Council Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty five, time is seven oh nine P M. We'll go and do roll call. Peyton? Keith Lee?
Here.
Lang Bart?
Here.
Barber? Rojas?
Here.
And Kennedy? Okay, we have a full council in attendance tonight, which means we do have a quorum. And if we can go ahead and get out of your list to help lead us off in the pledge.
I have a confession to be honest to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Item C, excused absences. We have none.
If I may?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I could request I need to get off the call it about an hour and fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Ask, okay, thank you.
Yep, no worries. Yeah, I'm hoping to move right along here this evening, so we'll keep cruising here. Excuse absences, we have none. Item D, agenda approval. Go and look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Maybe Liz.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda by Lang Bart with a second by Rojas. Any further discussion on tonight's agenda before we vote? Okay, hearing done, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of tonight's agenda. All those in favor? Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Lang Bart?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Rojas?
Aye.
And Kennedy? Was that a yes, John?
Yep.
Okay, there we go. Now I got you. Okay, we have six in the affirmative and zero against. Motion passes. Tonight's agenda is approved. It'll take us to item E, consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are approved with a single motion. No discussion in one vote. A council member may request to remove any item for discussion and a separate vote. Any items removed from the consent agenda will be placed under new business. Tonight's consent agenda consists of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from March tenth, twenty twenty five. Item two A ordinance introduction of ordinance twenty five dash eleven, an ordinance to the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska, amending Saldovia Municipal Code, Chapter two point three two, Elections, Sections two point three two point zero five five and two point three two point one six zero and adopting Section two point three two point zero five six. That is recommended for a public hearing on April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Last item on our consent agenda is item three, resolutions. We have resolution twenty five dash thirty eight, a resolution of the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska, urging the state of Alaska to make a meaningful and sustainable increase to the base student allocation, known as the B S A for public schools, sponsored by myself and council member Peyton. Does any member wish to remove any item at this time?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there was a little bit of an error. The approval of the minutes should be for the minutes of the regular meeting, March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
March twenty fourth, okay? We'll go ahead and just strike March tenth, insert March twenty, you said twenty fourth, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and I didn't even catch that. I didn't catch the date when I looked at those. Okay. Going back, does any member wish to remove any item at this time? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and look for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda by Rojas with a second by Lang Bart. Any more discussion on the consent agenda before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor? Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Lang Bart?
Oh.
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Rojas?
Aye.
And Kennedy?
Aye.
All right, motion passes with six in the affirmative and none against, and that is the approval of our consent agenda. Just before we move on here, I do gotta say, congratulations, I hear are in order. We just got a little sneak peek there, Ashley, when you were, when you were doing out there. So, congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm actually quite shocked you're in the meeting tonight. You would have gotten the pass.
What else am I doing?
Good for you. Well, congratulations to you guys.
Congratulations. Welcome to the meeting, Colby.
All right, we will move down to mayoral proclamations. We have none tonight. Item G, public presentation, prior notice. I see none. Is that still the case, Liz?
That's still correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, item H, public presentations for items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone signed up tonight?
We have Miss Laurel.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if you can hear me okay?
Yep, got you loud and clear, Laurel.
All right, well, after sitting through principal interviews today and finance and school board committee meetings, et cetera, over the last few days, I'd just like to thank Chris and Ashley for their contribution to the student base and population of our community. So, a big thank you for that and total props on the cuteness. That's awesome. Good job, Ashley. We know where that came from. Okay, so, that being said, Mr. Mayor, just wanna give you kind of a quick run through of activities and events that Saldovia Village Tribe has coming up in the next month or two. And I believe that the pool is on the agenda later, so I'm gonna jump on and share some insight on that at that time. But just taking a look at the month of April, we are starting up swim lessons at the school next week, at the school pool next week, with children who are in the ages of three through five years old pre K, and they'll get about a three-week series of introduction to swimming. And we're just really happy to be able to partner with the staff there, the school pool staff, being led by Amelia Pollock and Mariah Turner and all the great guards. So, and also, coming up next week is going to be the Community Easter Egg Hunt, and I'm pretty sure that hunt's been going on for my lifetime, and I grew up in Saldovia fifty four, fifty five years. So, this will be the first year that the eggs are not hard-boiled eggs. Sorry, national egg prices caused us to make that decision. And so, but they will be fun, awesome, plastic eggs with fun toys inside, followed by the chapel's Easter egg party, which usually has four thousand, no lie, four thousand eggs, full of candy. So, God bless those children. And then Easter Sunday, and obviously, there's a chance to celebrate on Easter, and the chapel hosts a community sunrise service at seven thirty A M outside beach, followed by a brunch back at the chapel. So, the sun is up and the sun has risen. So, come and celebrate with the folks from the chapel and the community. Continuing on that week, we'll be on the twenty fourth of April, having three days of spring carnival activities. So, be watching for those great, great announcements of the schedule and all the fun planned for the kids. Looking forward into May, Mr. Mayor, we will continue on with those swim lessons for kids, and then the second weekend in May, we'll see a bike rodeo for children, and we're hoping to partner with the V P S Os on that, if they're free to come up and hang out with the kids. And we'll also be having a cold water safety program, a couple days of that, taking place in partnership with the school district's migrant ed program. And then, just a note, as we move into May, we talked about this last time, that the Saldovia Bay Ferry will be launching. So, on the sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth, you'll have a preseason weekend of sailing, and then the twenty second will be the start. And on the seventeenth of May, we're gonna have a great science outing for the kids in the community to go up to Goal Island and check that out and learn from a lot of naturalists from Homer and Saldovia. And then, God bless the children. School will be out on the twenty second, and we'll kick off summer and take it running from there. We're looking forward to lots of summer plans with camps and special groups coming in to engage with the children in the community. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Laurel. Appreciate all the good information. Liz, do we have anyone else signed up this evening?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right, that'll conclude item H. Move us on down to item I, Committee and Advisory Board Reports. I see we have none. That's still the case, I assume?
That's still the case.
Okay, administrative reports, none, and I assume that's still the case.
Correct.
Okay, that'll take us to item K, public hearings. Ordinance twenty five dash ten, a non-code ordinance to the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska, amending the F Y twenty five budget by appropriating funds from the Major Maintenance and Repair Fund to the Boat Hallout Special Revenue Fund, capital projects for the repair of the large boat haulout trailer. This was introduced at the three twenty four, twenty five meeting, and we'll go and let the city manager take this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, there is a request for an amendment to this ordinance in your packet on page twenty four. When the work began on the boat haulout trailer, it was extra steel for more reinforcement. That took a little bit more than was originally for the steel for the reinforcement, as well as it just, it took a little bit of extra time than originally budgeted for or anticipated. So, we're asking, I am asking for an increase from that nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars to fifteen thousand. This includes the extra reinforced steel or the extra steel for reinforcement, a little extra time, and the, the rebuilding of two of the cylinders for the two cylinders. And that, you'll see that amended ordinance twenty five ten on page twenty five.
Okay. Page twenty five, okay, as amended, gotcha. Okay. Appreciate that. So, we're looking at an increase from ninety nine, twenty to fifteen thousand. Go ahead and open it up to council for any questions, comments related to ordinance twenty five dash ten. Heidi, you broke up a little bit, but I think I did read in your report that that, that thing is pretty well wrapped up, except for the, the two rams that are being rebuilt.
Yes, correct. So, those, the one has already been sent out, the other one needs to be sent out, and that was about a two to three week turnaround for those. It is in my report, and I meant to take a picture. You guys should stop by and see it. I'm sure it'll be outside here probably tomorrow, the next day. It is green. I, I can't specify that enough. So, we were talking about names. Somebody said the Green Machine, somebody, you know, said the Green Goddess, and all I could think was Hulk Smash. It's a, but it's really, it's really nice. It's, but for some of those tight areas were easy to rust, because they were, you know, those where the, where the steel was joining each other and, and tighter areas with not a lot of room in between, but water those may be reinforced. Or when we do more repairs in the future to seal the front of the trailer. Currently, it's open, so we are rust from the water getting in underneath that top plate on the trailer itself. Be covered and forced to close off to prevent rust as much, as well as some additional work on the, oh, I'm blanking the name, the piece that holds the tires. So, right now, it's, it's that lasts us hopefully a long time, but certainly future, just to, to, for preventative maintenance.
Okay. Hey, Vivian, do you, are you hearing bad garble too on your end?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, we have a terrible connection here tonight. Hopefully, this will either improve or won't get bad. It keeps speeding up and then just getting garbled, Liz. I'm not sure if there's anything you can do on your end.
We can check to turn that speaker off.
Yeah, it's acting like it's a bandwidth issue, not a, not a feedback, but we can see here. Okay, the only other question I had then, the fifteen, Heidi, than that, did you guys get, or did he get quotes for the rams? And so, you're pretty confident that number's gonna be a solid number?
Yes, so, we, we, yes, we did. We are anticipating those rams to be under three thousand. We had a quote for four rams to be repaired for seven, and then we're actually only asking, or for less than seven, but we're, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, I apologize. We're only asking for two of them to be repaired. So, I feel pretty comfortable that we have it in the budget, as well as this fifteen thousand, we'll cover what we need to complete that project.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions or comments before the, for the manager, before we move on to public?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, yeah, I'm totally in favor of ordinance twenty five ten as amended, and I'm glad to see we've got this project wrapped up. A lot of people would depend on it, and I'm thankful the city could pull it together. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Vivian. Okay, do we have anyone signed up this evening, Liz, to comment on ordinance twenty five dash ten?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring ordinance twenty five dash ten as amended back to council for final action.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty five ten as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Rojas to approve ordinance twenty five dash ten as amended with a second by Kennedy. Any further discussion on ordinance twenty five dash ten before we vote?
If I may, just to clarify, that's ordinance twenty five ten as amended.
Yes, correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Any further discussion on ordinance twenty five dash ten as amended before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of ordinance twenty five dash ten as amended. All those in favor? Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Lang Bart?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Rojas?
Aye.
And Kennedy?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, six in the affirmative, none against, and that is the approval of ordinance twenty five dash ten as amended. That will take us down to item L, unfinished business, none. Item M, new business, Resolution twenty five dash thirty nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska, awarding the Saldovia Upper Dam Periodic Safety Inspection Professional Services Contract to blank in the amount of blank and authorizing the city manager to execute the appropriate documents. And you know what? Sorry about that. Okay, that's still, yeah, I pulled mine off of the
No, you're great. It's in, it's in the laydown. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, you, that's, I was just right. So, in the laydown on page three, we, it's the went out was for the April fourteenth meeting. So, we didn't, the R F P actually, or R F Q, I should say, request quotes closed yesterday. So, for the, for the packet, we didn't have the complete information of anybody who was that request of quotes. We did send out that to six different vendors. It was posted on our website and on Facebook. The individuals that it was sent to came from a list of approved engineering firms per the Department of Natural Resources, as they're the ones that regulate the dams in Alaska. So, along with that is that they have a requirement for the periodic safety inspection to be done to their scope of work, and that was included in the R F Q, that that work needed to be done, and that they approve the, the firm that is going to perform the P S I. So, we received only one quote. It's the same firm that provided the periodic safety inspection in twenty twenty two. We did receive response from another company that said, we know these guys are gonna bid, and they're gonna come way under the rest of us, so there's other services that they could provide in the future. So, it sounds like everybody was allowing for these, this firm to apply at their lower and, and then I did verify with the Department of Natural Resources that they would be a qualified firm to complete this work. And they said, yes, they, you know, they are on the list, and they are approved. So, two hundred. I do believe there's room in the budget to cover that additional cost, but should we need, we can also bring back an ordinance to appropriate those funds if we need those additional funds. But it is there now, and with that, this will allow us to, to schedule them to come and perform this work. We're hoping to have it done before June thirtieth, so that that's this fiscal year budget, since that's what it's budgeted for. And I will also say that the Alaska Department of Natural Resources, in that discussion about them being approved, an approved firm, stated they would like to come down and, and visit as well. So, it sounds like we'll track it, schedule it, make sure that both, both agencies can be here at the same time while we perform this inspection. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you, Heidi. All right, so this will be twenty, Resolution twenty five dash thirty nine, with the professional services contract being awarded Northern Geotechnical Engineering Incorporated in the amount of sixty two hundred dollars, and authorizing the city manager to execute the appropriate documents. Go ahead and open it up to council for questions, comment. Okay, I'll be in support of this Resolution twenty five dash thirty nine. Obviously, it's a requirement that we get this work performed, more of a housekeeping issue in terms of getting this out there and getting the work done, and then getting it submitted back to the state. So, the amount does not seem too out of whack. Obviously, we've done our homework. The firm has been, is on the approved, approved vendor list, so makes sense to go ahead and authorize this, in my opinion. That's Resolution twenty five dash thirty nine. Anyone else before we move on to public? Okay, do we have anyone from the public signed up tonight, Liz, to comment on Resolution twenty five dash thirty nine?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring Resolution twenty five dash thirty nine back to the council for final action.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty five dash thirty nine.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Rojas to approve Resolution twenty five dash thirty nine with a second by Lang Bart. Any further discussion on the Resolution twenty five dash thirty nine before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go and vote on the approval of Resolution twenty five dash thirty nine. All those in favor? Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Lang Bart?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Rojas?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Okay, motion for the approval of Resolution twenty five dash thirty nine is passed with six in the affirmative, none opposed. Thank you, everyone, for that one. That'll take us to item M two, Resolution twenty five dash forty, a resolution of the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska, approving the issuance of request for proposal, R F P number zero four dash twenty twenty five, city maintenance shop insulation project. And we'll go ahead and let the city manager present on this.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, so, this has come about after the review program. First, they gave us a pause with the president's executive orders, and they gave us the green light, I think it was last week or the week before, saying that we can resume with our work, our project work, and one of those components of that project, one of the components of that project is to install spray foam insulation into the maintenance shop. So, this R F P is looking for requests for proposals from qualified firms to come in and perform that service.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. And let's see, this will be on page twenty eight, if anyone has any additional questions or comments. And I, I did have one, Heidi, there was reference in the R F P to a confined space permit. Was that just a general listing, or is there actually a confined space permit required inside that building anywhere?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is a good catch. We used this template from the lift station project. Both Dan and myself reviewed it, and I, neither of us caught that. So, we will strike that from the R F P before it's issued tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, because I didn't think that was gonna be applicable, so. Okay. Anyone else?
Find it.
Yeah, anyone else on council has any questions, comments for Resolution twenty five dash forty?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, I'm totally in favor of twenty five, Resolution twenty five forty, to get that building insulated, I think is a great, great help to get that maintenance shop taken care of. So, I'm in favor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Vivian. Yeah, I too will be in favor of Resolution twenty five dash forty. As always, we have safeguards on our R F Ps where we can reject any and all bids if they are over the amount that we have available to us. So, seems pretty thorough going through it, and I will be in support of Resolution twenty five dash forty. Anyone else before we go to public? Okay, Liz, do we have anyone signed up from the public to comment on Resolution twenty five dash forty?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. We'll go ahead and bring Resolution twenty five dash forty back to council for final action tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we adopt Resolution twenty five dash forty.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Rojas to approve Resolution Okay, we have a motion by Rojas to approve resolution twenty-five dash forty. And I believe second by Peyton on that one. Any further discussion on the resolution before we vote? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of resolution twenty-five dash forty. All those in favor, Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbar?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Rojas?
Aye.
And Kennedy?
Aye.
Okay, motion, or excuse me, a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash thirty-nine is approved. Six in the affirmative and none opposed. And let's see, actually, that was twenty-five dash forty. Sorry about that. Twenty-five dash forty. I got mixed up here on my going through on the agenda items. So that was the approval of resolution twenty-five dash forty. That was for the shop installation project. Okay, that'll take us down to item M three, resolution twenty-five dash forty-one. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, approving a contract with Ark and Fire Custom Welding. And fabrication for the repair of the large boat haul-out trailer in amount not to exceed eleven thousand, a sole source procurement. And we'll go ahead and let the staff, city manager, comment on this one.
Yes, thank you. This is a perfect. That those two Rams repairs was thirty-five hundred. So I had the thirty-five hundred and eleven thousand. Which is why I asked for fifteen thousand. The budget was a little over, just in case anything extra pop, pop, pops up. During this process, but we are nearing the end. So I feel pretty comfortable that that fifteen thousand is gonna cover it. Eleven thousand is from that work for Ark and Fire. And this resolution will approve that contract with Ark and Fire to complete that, the project.
Okay, just for clarification. So we are direct paying for the Rams and, and it's not, that's not running through Ark and Fire. That's why the difference is there.
You can. Project, but Ark and Fire receives eleven thousand.
Yep, okay, sounds good. Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up for questions, comments from council for resolution twenty-five dash forty-one. Okay, I'll be in support of resolution twenty-five dash forty-one. The work is just about complete. Seems it was obviously we needed to get this work done and we'll have our trailer back up and running. So. They've done quite a bit of work for us in the past, and I think they, they've done a good job. City seems to be happy with the value of what we are getting. So I'll be in support of resolution twenty-five dash forty-one. Anyone else before we go to public? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and go to public. Liz, do we have anyone signed up to comment on resolution twenty-five dash forty-one?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring resolution twenty-five dash forty-one back to council for final action.
Eric Campbell?
Yep, go ahead, John.
I'll make a resolution to, for twenty-five forty-one. For Ark and Fire.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash forty-one by Kennedy with a second by Barber. Any further discussion on resolution twenty-five dash forty-one before we vote? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of resolution twenty-five dash forty-one. All those in favor, Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbar?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Rojas?
Aye.
And Kennedy?
Aye.
Okay, motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash forty-one is approved with six in the affirmative and none against. Okay, last item this evening, item, what is this, M four? Resolution twenty-five dash forty-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saldovia. Alaska approving a service agreement with the Alaska Municipal League for Comprehensive Planning Services. To update the two thousand and fourteen Saldovia Comprehensive Plan and authorizing the city manager to execute the appropriate documents. And we'll go ahead and let Heidi present on this one.
Okay, so we have talked over the last several months about how AML was able to offer some planning services to the city of Saldovia to complete this comprehensive plan update. Narrowed down what the, their involvement would look like. And actually, they've been in the scope of services that they provide. If you look. Work, they're. Not. Thousand of Nels. And I feel a little bad, but I, I did turn, return to him and I said, Nels, you're not gonna complete. All of this work and under five thousand. So to make it realistic, it's at ten thousand and that is by hour. At an hourly rate. So if it doesn't exceed, or if it doesn't cost ten thousand, then that's great. But it gives the opportunity. That amount. And then it can go above in writing if that's what we. Put appropriation ordinance forward, because I'm still in discussion with the Kenai Peninsula Borough about the, they'll play in this plan. And they've offered to provide some funding. They will cover the majority, if not all, of this cost. I have, I will bring that up to you, guys. Virtual website. They've actually already started drafting it just freely as we were working through this process. And I got to see it last Friday and it looked amazing. So I think that's gonna. Get that out there and people can take their time to review the basics of, of the plan. Deep dive as much as there's some questions that are focused on the goals and focus areas of the plan. And so that we can get that from the public. Come in and a community meeting over the summer. And they want to help with the public engagement and input planning overall. They are wanting to coordinate with the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District for demographic updates. That's something that I've started that process with. Economist on. Overall picture for the entire Kenai Peninsula. But now they, that was the next step was to kind of drill down into each community. So. Some questions, everything, process, and I, they'll be able to work with. So that we'll be able to update the plan with those demographics. And then we'll have another. Public engagement piece where we're talking about the implementation of the plan. Once we've really heard from the public on what they want. The goals and the focus areas to be. So then that next step is implementation. And we'll follow that with, and more internally, those will be discussions with the Planning Commission and the City Council then. Of what that looks like for implementation from the city side and, and vetting. That plan to make sure that the city, this is within the city's scope. And then with that, they will help us draft the final plan. And they'll prepare it, that documentation for the city of Saldovia. And provide supporting materials and presentation for a public hearing and approval process. And they gave us a timeline here of eight months. And like I said, they're really walking us through the whole process. So I think there's really great value. With this project.
Hey, great, Heidi. Thank you for the update. We did catch most of that. We saw a very bad, bad garble going on. And it just kind of goes in and out. So I'm not sure if it's our equipment or if it's the internet connection. But we'll do our best here. So when we get to your report, you might, we'll see how that goes. All right, so this is resolution twenty-five dash forty-two. And this is for a, an agreement with the AML. For services to go ahead and start reworking our comprehensive plan. We'll go ahead and open it up to council for questions, comments.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, finally.
Yep, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, again, yeah, Heidi, we missed, I missed a lot of what you said. But the scope of the work, was that the scope of the work something that the council or city office is given to the working members? How do we come up with the scope of work? Was that?
It is page forty through the mayor. It's page forty in your packet.
Okay, okay. And, and then the ten thousand dollars that we assigned for this, refresh my memory where we have that in the budget?
Uh, we do not currently, but we are requesting the Kenai Peninsula Borough to help fund this project.
Okay, great. Okay, I must have missed that one. You're all garbly. Okay, yeah, I think it's a great endeavor. That we need to take care of the comprehensive plan that we've gotten updated. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Vivian. Anyhow, what else with questions, comments on resolution twenty-five dash forty-two?
Hey, I just have a comment. I'm in favor of this as well. I think it's a win-win for the city and for all of us. Just, just specifically in the stuff that it'll help the city staff learn and be able to, you know, to move on with our own grants and stuff. I, I just think it's a great partnership and money well spent.
Yeah, thanks, Sean. Anyone else?
Um, my question.
Go ahead, Jack.
On the comprehensive plan. That it's, it's not drafted. That's not realistic in the goals that we may be able to obtain and spend money on things that can't be achieved. And I guess we get some time to look at the plans to make sure it's heading in the right direction. Is that correct, Heidi?
Through the mayor, yes, there will be a vetting process by the Planning Commission and the Saldovia City Council to ensure that it's within the, the scope of the city.
Yeah, okay, because it, it, it doesn't do us any good to spend money on something that's not gonna be implemented in the near future. So that's my only comment.
Okay, thank you. Harmony, you got your hand up?
Yep, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in favor of delegation to professionals in order to just. Create a more cohesive document. I think it's gonna be really great for the city to have something like that moving forward. Our last comprehensive plan was beautiful, a little cumbersome, but you know, it was very lofty. I think it'll be great for us to update that with some more realistic and economically. Sound endeavors.
Okay, thank you, Harmony. Yep, I too am in favor of resolution twenty-five dash forty-two. I think we're at a, at a crossroads here and at a good point. With how much time has gone by with our current plan that we are definitely in need of, of an update. Kind of a reset to get us pointed in the right direction for the next fifteen, twenty years here. And so I think this is, uh, this will be money well spent to, to do this and see where we're at in today's environment. So certainly things have changed, you know, in the last fifteen years. So we'll see where, where we're gonna go with this. But I'll be in support of resolution twenty-five dash forty-two. I think for the, the ten thousand dollars is a, is a great value with the. With the proposal from, from AML on, on how they envisioned being able to provide these drafting services. To, to the smaller communities and making it affordable for them to participate. So. Yeah, I'll be in support. Anyone else on resolution twenty-five dash forty-two before we go to the public? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead. Liz, do we have anyone signed up to comment on resolution twenty-five dash forty-two?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring resolution twenty-five dash forty-two back to council for final action.
Campbell?
Yep, go ahead.
I'll make a, a motion to approve resolution twenty-five twenty-four as read.
As twenty-five dash forty-two?
Yes.
Perfect.
Forty-two. I transpose that, didn't I?
And we have a second?
Second.
Okay, you have a motion by Kennedy to approve resolution twenty-five dash forty-two. With a second by Langbar. Any further discussion on resolution twenty-five dash forty-two before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of resolution twenty-five dash forty-two. All those in favor, Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbar?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Rojas?
Aye.
And Kennedy?
Aye.
Okay, motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash forty-two is passed with six in the affirmative and none opposed. Thank you, everyone. That includes all of our legislation tonight. Ashley's giving us a little sneak peek there, I see. Oh, looks good. Looks, are you, are you already back home?
No, we're in Anchor Point.
Okay.
We're gonna, yeah, we're, we're waiting till Sunday. We'll catch the ferry on Sunday.
Okay, perfect, perfect, perfect. All right. Well, good. All right, last item up tonight, item and city manager's report. Heidi, if you want to give us the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this mic a little bit better? Can you hear me better? I switched.
Right now, yeah, I'll let you know if you start garbling up again.
Okay, so I'll just try to do a quick run through here. It's the first two pages are the newer updates. Starting with the Rasmussen Foundation Community Grant that we applied for for the historic boardwalk improvement projects. We did not receive that award. Apparently, I misspelled in there and put word instead of award. So we will continue to look for funding for that project. We've also talked about having David, our part-time public works coming on and, and doing some of that work. This spring or summer. So we'll just see where we get with that. For the FY twenty-four audit, staff were able to review the draft documents and participated in a meeting regarding that draft. There were no big surprises. Things seem to continue to be moving in the right direction. We did still have one repeat finding. And that we feel that will resolve in the coming year. Now that we have a good audit support team on deck that we can continue to work through, work with. Prior to the FY twenty-five audit, so prior to the end of this fiscal year. And a few changes will be made in the final audit, but that should be presented at the April twenty-eighth meeting. I've already also implemented the audit figures into the draft budget. So as we move forward in budget discussions, you'll see those figures moving forward as well. And everything's in the black. Susan B. English School Pool Closure, I just wanted to comment on, touch base on this because I know it's on the community's mind. I've been in a lot of meetings lately, just in, in about the edu, about education in general and some specific to the pool. Including April first with the SERSA board meeting, the KPBSD Board of Education meeting, the twenty-fourth. That was our finance meeting. Last, or yesterday, I was on the meeting from ten thirty AM until ten thirty PM. Though the evening was, that was more personal, so I could provide a, a personal comment about staffing. I also participated in a discussion with the SOC Coordinator, the SERSA Chair, and Kevin Lyon. About next steps and talking about a short-term plan versus a long-term plan. And I know that that's our SERSA Chair, who is City Clerk Diamond, is in, in discussion with the Borough Mayor also about. Um, with the borough mayor also about what that looks like. So. Um, a lot of discussion being had, a lot, there seems to be a lot of support to see some kind of a scenario, um, to keep the pool open. How that works out, we're not sure yet. And Anil Chik is in the, in the same place as they try to work through this process. And, um. I would just say, uh, that we'll continue to follow it and, and see where we can lend support. Um, as we move through it. So. I did say that SIRSIA was planning on putting out a survey and I think that that may be on hold now and that might be something that the borough, um, is looking to put out themselves. But like I said, we'll, we'll provide updates as we have them. It's, it's nice that at least everybody's having that discussion and. For the record, those three, those two pools remain on the closure for, on the. Closure list for all three scenarios. So. Staff incident response. I would just wanted to give a big thanks, uh, to city staff who provided support on April 2nd, um, to the public safety efforts to remove a van from the bay. Uh, that included Harbor Master, Jant Peterson, our public works crew, Amanda and Johnny. Um, Travis with SBFD and our VPSOs, Amy and Dewey. So. Um, that was, ended up being, uh, more of a local effort, um, with the city part, uh, backing up and supporting. Uh, the VPSOs in that process. BHO Large Trailer Repair Project, we've talked about, so I won't, um, spend any more time there. Septic lift station replacement project. I am so excited and pleased to say that Peninsula Construction is here. They came off the ferry today. All the parts and pieces are hopefully here with them. Um, and they were starting to stage this afternoon, which means project, um, will be ongoing for this week. And they were only anticipating four or five days for that project. And so hopefully it's, uh, completed here before I leave or shortly after. The, I also wanted to share that I had a great conversation, um, with a group from DOT yesterday. Uh, I learned that they have a pedestrian counter program where they implement and place counters in communities to count pedestrians and bicyclists. Uh, this is an important tool for us, uh, that would allow us to collect data to move forward and looking at sidewalk improvements. Uh, alternative transportation pathways, um, and really have some, um, robust, robust. Uh, data to, to back up what the need is for the community. Uh, I, they did share with me the website, uh, where they've been, where they've done some vehicle counting. Over the last several years and that was interesting. There was some errors noted on one of the counts, but on Main Street, it was the showing between four and 500. Vehicles a day for an average. So just people driving up and down the street, four to 500 vehicles passing. Uh, so you think about that and then a, a two to 300 people coming into the community on top of it in a day, uh, it's certainly some congestion. So that'll be a good start, uh, to that discussion. Uh, if, uh. If they, uh, accept our application as an application process, they did think we were a good candidate, then they'll send somebody. Um, into the community to verify where it should be placed and whether we get one or two. Um, and then we'll install and go through that process. I'll, I'll keep you up to date as we go. City yard cleanup, we did start, uh, we've had to switch gears between the trailer and now snow. But this is the yard across from the city yard. Uh, we are going to rent an excavator from, the big excavator from Hopkins. Um, and have a plan to do a brush fire this spring, clean up that brush and some of, um, the discarded material there. And make that yard usable, uh, and, and. Be able to store some of the, the, um, discarded items on city properties over there. So. We're continuing to, to improve and clean up our areas. I would like to point out that we will have limited staff availability for the last two weeks in April. About three weeks. It's, it's really Liz and I will be gone next week. Amanda leaves at the end of next week. Um, and we'll be gone through the beginning of May. And so we'll just have some staff shortages. We did have a really great incident response meeting today. I wanted to make sure our bases were covered in case of, of a volcano or fire. Uh, tsunami warning. Uh, so we ended up having a team of 15 in this room, which was really great to see everybody here all at once and talk through what that process looks like, who everybody's backups are. Uh, in case somebody is not available, um, and what that expectation is. Certainly through the next couple of weeks, um, while we're short-staffed, but, and then also in general. So that was a really great meeting. Best practice score, you may have saw the documentation for the spring best practice score in your packet last. Or the laydown last meeting. I forgot to mention that we did receive that. We remain in the eighties at 82. So that's good news. Tariffs, I just wanted to touch on real quickly that we are hearing some discussion and concern about supply availability or costs. Um, in particular, we did receive some emails, um, with concern about, uh, the cost and availability of supplies for the water treatment plant. Um, chlorine being a big one. It sounds like a lot of. The pool chlorine comes from Canada, but when we were able to do a little bit more research. Um, and some of the agencies we work with did a little bit more research. And we were able to verify that our chlorine is made in the USA. It even says on the bucket. Um, so we should be fine for now, but we continue to be aware that there may be unknown impacts in the future on that and other products. The AMHS 2045 Long Range Plan was a 295-page document. I did read the entire thing, I'm impressed to say. Um, and submitted a letter of support, uh, on behalf of the city of Sodovia for that plan. I hope you guys all had a chance. I know I emailed it out late to you guys, but I hope you had a chance to at least review it. Um, in the letter, we did request more information about the 12.8 million dollar estimate for the dock repairs for 2020, 2030. And we're in the mid-range category. And to coordinate with AMHS on how we could address their uplands and staging. Parking, upland staging and parking concerns in the more immediate future. We actually received an overall shore rating of poor, even though, um, the only item that was noted as poor was that upstate. Upland staging and parking. Uh, so I do think that there are ways that we can address that sooner than later. Uh, the dock approached trestle or bulkhead were in fair condition. The dolphins mooring structures in good conditions. The terminal building in good condition and electric and utilities in fair condition. So. We're looking forward to collaborating and working with them on what we can do to help improve our status. Um, and keep that, uh, that service coming. Just a quick update on employment. I'm sad to say that Radzi has submitted his letter of resignation. He will be with us until May 11th, uh, and we will be really sad to go, see him go because he fills many roles, including water treatment plant. Uh, IT support here in this building and for, uh, the council meetings. As well as, uh, some backup for Harbor Master, some, um, work in the Sodovia space. Uh, so there'll be big shoes to fill. Also Alison Ryan is back and she's ready to start her seizing groundkeeping. So we'll be looking to get her back on the books here towards the end of the month. Um, and we're still looking for backup for the ferry and refuse. Alison is taking on part of that role. Um, but it's great to have more support. Just in case. Um, also due to the shift in personnel and public work, the public works position might be reposted at the end of the week. I'm looking at budget and. And staffing and, and talking this through with the public works on what that looks like, uh, the loss of Radzi. And, um, the harbor assistant positions will be posted by the end of the month. Homer Foundation. Great, awarded senior meals program $10,000, um, in funding last year to help support the program. And last Friday, they sent a representative over to. To do an interview with Jamie and I. It was an amazing visit. Um, and I look forward to seeing the foundation's work, um, continue in the community. So very supportive. Uh, they sounded like they were interested in funding future projects. Um, and it's just a good working relationship. So we want to keep that up. And then just a update on, well, not update, but a reminder on the upcoming meeting schedule. I did want to keep the ones you guys have made through on here just to show you the progress we've made of, uh, those meetings that have been. Checked off. Uh, we're now here at the April 8th special meeting. There will be a standalone work session tomorrow about capital projects at 6:00 PM. Uh, the following week, both myself and City Clerk Diamond will be out. Uh, and then we'll resume meetings the week of April 28th. That's another regular meeting. Um, and we'll need a work session in there to tie up any loose ends and talk about the senior meal budget and anything else you guys want. I'm also looking for water meter quotes. So we'll include that. Um, in that discussion as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everything else I believe we've covered in the past. Um, and let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, great Heidi. Yeah, just some feedback. That must've been, uh, your mic because you didn't miss a beat on that. So that, just so you know. So, okay, thank you for your report. Any questions or comments from council on the manager's report this evening?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yep, go ahead Vivian.
Just one question. Heidi, were you referenced in the, uh, the dock long range plan? When, when we got a poor rating for the upland staging and parking is in a poor. Condition, what, what are we referring to there?
Excellent question. I did, um, request additional feedback for that in the letter of support as well as I sent a letter out. Um, to, to AMHS, um, our AMHS representative as well. So I'm looking to hear back from them. On what exactly that means or want, or what they want. Um, I know it probably has to deal with different, different crews on different ferries. Uh, dependent, I think the Kennicott, uh, used to have, take issue, um, with the way Sodovia operates. In the past, the Testamina seems a little bit more open and flexible with us, uh, but, uh, I'm not sure how other communities operate. Uh, we do have a designated parking area. That's where Caravan stages their equipment. Um, but we, there's a pattern in the community to just park along the street and load from there. So I, I'm. Would assume maybe it's congestion and, and. I, maybe it doesn't follow protocol. I'm not really sure. I, we need to hear back from them what it is they really desire and so that we can hopefully start to meet that. Um, that want.
Okay, yeah, I just, yeah, if, if, yeah, if it's that area that Caravan uses. If that's part of the condition of improving our rating, then we should look into that. But yeah, you're waiting here back. That sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you Vivian. Anyone else with questions, comments for the city manager tonight? Okay, thank you Heidi. Appreciate your report as always. We'll go ahead and get wrapped up here. Item O, informational items not requiring action. The introduction of ordinance 25 dash 09 was postponed pending a work session. That work session on the ordinance is tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, May 14th, 2025. Um, item O2, city manager Gagel and city clerk Diamond will be on personal leave the week of, uh, April 13th. And item O3, capital budget work session will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, April 9th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And then additional budget work session will be scheduled towards the end of April. Item P, executive session, none. Item Q, council and mayor comments concerning items not on the agenda. Uh, Peyton?
Then tonight, thank you.
Okay, Keith Lee?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, Langbart?
No comment.
Barber?
No comment.
Rojas?
Uh, great work everyone and congratulations, Ashley. You look like a beautiful little guy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Kennedy?
Good night, everybody.
All right, sounds good. Again, thanks everyone. Thanks to the city staff. Appreciate everything. And our next meeting will be a regular meeting on Monday, April 28th at 6:00 PM and look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we have a second.
I'll check it for that.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. We have a second. Do we have any objection? All right, hearing no objections to adjourn, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you, everyone, and we will talk to you guys tomorrow night.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Begin tomorrow night.